Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonian Watch Stadium, Antay Kau Larana. The acronym is AMPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 88, Class 88. What did we learn in Class 87? Well, we're still going through the Charter of United Nations of 1945, right? And we're going through Chapter 6. In Chapter 6, about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. So, under the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, what is one dispute that sometimes Moors most likely will have with United States of America? Well, we may have a dispute under what's commonly known as Udi Passevadi's Juris, right? So, as Moors become a successor state, we start making competent claims to the jurisdiction, the latitude, longitude, right? The geographical coordinates of that state. United States of America may have issue with the fact that we're now proclaiming our sovereignty and independence. But for the most part, the Moors right now need to understand how the Moors come together based upon unity to maintain standards. What type of standards? International law standards, right? Customary norms of international law. So, under Udi Passevadi's Juris, we have an opportunity to settle our disputes by using well-set up principles, well-set up norms. That way, we can maintain the peace. So, Udi Passevadi's Juris allows us to claim the colonial borders that's already been set forth, right? So, therefore, as an example, the state of Colorado gives us an opportunity to take over those borders that the colonists already set forth in their land surveys, right? But when Moors utilize this as a means of peace, we must also understand that United States of America is also obligated to Udi Passevadi's Juris. What does that mean? You see, when you go and look up the General Assembly, what's called the Resolution 1514 of 1960, the Resolution 1514 is also about maintaining the peace during the times of decolonization. So, as Moors start to restore their states through constitutions, we have to maintain the peace with United States of America, and United States of America has to maintain the peace with us, right? What else falls under Udi Passevadi's Juris? Well, the General Assembly Resolution 2625, the year 1970, also falls under Udi Passevadi's Juris. So, we're talking about frontier disputes, right? So, Udi Passevadi's Juris fall under frontier disputes, and it's a well-set up principle through the International Court of Justice. So, United States of America also has an obligation to maintain the peace with us. And we have an obligation to maintain the peace with them. We gotta get back to the norms of our own treaties. And our treaty says, "A Treaty of Peace and Friendship." So, therefore, when you look at Resolution 2625, it basically titled friendly relations during decolonization, right? That's what it should be called, but... So, at the end of the day, Moors, Udi Passevadi's Juris is a value add to Moors because it's already been settled. It is what it is. The Moors don't have to argue with the colonists about the jurisdiction based upon boundary lines, and the Moors don't have to argue with each other based upon boundary lines. All we have to do is follow the instructions of international law. It's as simple as that, right? So, let's keep in mind that Udi Passevadi's Juris also falls under Chapter 6 of the Charter. And Chapter 6 is about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. So, therefore, if in fact the Moors have a frontier dispute with the United States of America, or the United States International Organization, or one of their charter dependency states, then we always can enforce Udi Passevadi's Juris as a well-set up norm of international law, right? Alright, Moors, let's go ahead and get into the class. As you know, AMPAC opens up with the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount, right? So, the Constitution outlines not only the status of the nationals, but it outlines your geographical coordinates of your state. That way, you can enforce your Udi Passevadi's Juris norms, alright? In good fashion, in good due form, right? Because you have the proper written instrument that points out the border lines, and now those internal lines, those internal border lines for colonists, your new border lines now have turned into new international border lines. They're international borders, and no longer internal borders of the United States. They're international borders of your own state, alright? So, the Constitution is paramount. So, we're starting now to get into the Charter of United Nations, Chapter 6 regarding the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. Everything starts with the first contract, and the first contract is what? Constitutions. Constitutions sets forth the frontier of what you're claiming, right? That's where everything starts, Moors. This is why the Act of Outages of 1906 preamble is so important. It talks about the triple principles, sovereignty and pennants. So, sovereignty and pennants, based upon a triple principle, is also founded, it was called Udi Passevadi's Juris. All these things are in correlation of each other, alright? So, the Constitution is the first step towards getting your liberation from your occupation. That must be understood, okay? Alright. So, today, we're gonna start understanding what's called erga omnis parties. And then, we're gonna get into what's called a declaration of intervention. So, right now, the Moors are asking the question, okay, now that we have more states, are we gonna all individually keep taking the United States of America to the ICJ? Do we all, as individual states, have to keep utilizing our constable courts to keep dealing with the United States of America, right? How is that Moors can come together based upon what's commonly known as a class action lawsuit? That where we can bound ourselves together, right? Become interdependent states and fight as one state? What type of states? As the United States of Morocco, right? Under that namesake, right? So, as we start taking steps towards ratifying, concluding, right? Our Constitution, United States of Morocco, when we finally get to that stage, we've had some practice, we've had some exercises of now enforcing our own sovereignty and independence of our states and integrity domains. But before we even draft the Constitution, United States of Morocco, there are means and ways of how we can still come together as interdependent states, right? So, we'll keep talking about that. That way, right now, the Moors have to understand the proper concept and context of what's happening in this moment. As we start to come together, right? The Moors right now, we gotta huddle up. We have to huddle up as one team, right? So, when we huddle up, what happens in the huddle? Well, let's say you're talking about basketball. In basketball, the coach has the clipboard, right? And he's drawing out a play, right? And he's writing X's and O's on that clipboard, and he's telling you, "Here's the play, and this is how you go out and execute that play," right? And everybody breaks out the huddle and goes back on the court and executes it. Well, that's what's happening right now through AMPAC study session. Right, we're, right now, we're talking about the strategy, and then the tactical side of how we enforce that strategy, right? So, this is the clipboard action that we're doing right now. We're talking about the plan. Then, we'll go out and execute the plan, alright? As erga omnis parties, okay? And we'll keep talking about this, Moors, alright? As we start to hold up, right now, all the Moors are hoeing up. We're not necessarily out there playing just yet. We're not on the field right now against the United States of America. All the Moors states are coming together at a round table. We're huddling up to talk about the plan. The X's and O's, that's what's happening right now. Need the Moors have the proper mindset, alright? Let's go ahead and get started. Okay, so today, we'll go over erga omnis parties, but before I do that, let's take a look at the board. So, on the board, I have the Charter of United Nations of 1945, Chapter 6. Chapter 6 is about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, right? So, the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, what if all the Moors states wanna have a class action lawsuit against the United States of America? Well, how did we go about doing that? Because in international law, it's not referred to as a class action lawsuit. It's referred to as erga omnis parties. And how you come together is through an express written document called a declaration of intervention. And this is how we all come together, alright? Let's talk about that, okay? Here we go. So, in the Chapter 6, Pacific Settlement of Disputes, here we go. "The power of unity and sovereignty as erga omnis parties, and our declarations of intervention, i.e. a class action lawsuit." So, right now, on the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, we wanna settle a dispute with the United States of America? What do we need to do? We need to come together as erga omnis parties through our written expression, the proper written instrument that's called a declaration of intervention. We'll talk about that over the next two or three classes, okay? Just to let the Moors know, this is what you call a clipboard conversation, alright? We're talking about the strategy. We're holding up to talk about it, right? Then, we'll practice it, and then we'll actually execute this in the months to come, right? As we prepare to go to the International Court of Justice as more states coming together, alright? Okay, so let's read again. "We need to come together with unity, right? The power, Moors, the powers in unity, not as being in one lone state, there's no lone state. There's all the Moors states coming together as interdependent states." Okay, so, "The power of unity and sovereignty as erga omnis parties, and our declarations of intervention, i.e. a class action lawsuit," is what we're trying to learn about now, okay? Alright, let's go ahead and jump on in. Okay, so first, we're gonna learn about erga omnis parties, okay? As a basics, right? The basic fundamentals. Moors have to go back and do a little bit more research. And then, we're gonna eventually get into what's called a declaration of intervention, alright? So, I'll be clicking back and forth a little bit about both as we continue to learn about both, okay? But we'll take our time, we'll get through this. But as you can see, we spent a lot of time on Chapter 6 of the Charter. It's one of the most important chapters of the Charter, okay? This is how you settle disputes, Moors, because we cannot think about going to war. We have to learn how to be competent with our pen. We can beat anybody on planet Earth with a pen, anyone, anyone, if we learn to become competent, Moors. But we must have unity, we must be together on this, alright? Okay, let's go ahead and get started with erga omnis parties. Sister Nova?
Erga omnis parties. Erga omnis means "in relation to all or dispute with all." The term is used in international law as the state's right to defend against foreigners that trespass against another state and its nation's human rights via the preemptory norms of international law, just cogits. The ICJ recognizes erga omnis principles as a means to enforce state rights against any foreign state, international organization, organs, agents, and third parties that trespasses on or against the property, territory, or frontier of a successor state.
Okay, let's pause right there. So, um, here's what the Moors must understand. Erga omnis means that you can bring a lawsuit against anyone that's trespassing against your property. Anyone that's trespassing against our state, because our state is the property, right? Not only against our state, but any property within our state. But erga omnis means that we can bring a lawsuit against anyone that's breaching the contract. Anyone who's violating the contract, right? Because this is about contract law. But what if the party, what if a party's doing something to you, and their name is not on the contract? How do you enforce a contract against someone whose name is not on it? Because they can easily say, "Well, no contract, no contest." Which means you cannot contest them if their name's not on the contract, because you're yelling out loud, "Hey, this is a breach of contract." But what if they have not acceded to that contract? What if they haven't signed that contract, right? So, you got one party that's signed it that you got a problem with, but what if there's some other people, some other third parties that was a part of injuring you? When I say "you," your state, right? So, you got the United States of America, and you got the United States International Organization, and then you got their 51 charter dependent states. Those are three different legal personalities. But guess what? Only the United States of America's name is on the treaties. Only the United States of America's name is on the Charter of the United Nations, right? The United States International Organization is not a party to the treaties. They're not a party to the Charter of United Nations. And neither are their 50 interdependent chartered states. They're not parties to the treaties, which means they're not parties to the contract. So, how do you enforce a contract against someone whose name is not on the contract if in fact your position is that you're trying to enforce a contract? They say, "Well, my name's not on it, so how can you enforce it against me?" Well, erga omnis says, the rule is you can bring your suit towards anyone who's injured you even if their name is not on the contract. Well, how is that? Here's the deal, Moors, as we get ready to read this. "All states on planet Earth are responsible for every international organization that is part of their jurisdiction. So, therefore, the United States of America is responsible for all internationally wrongful acts that the international organization is known as, the United States does, in our land. The United States of America, as the state, as the name on the contract, a party to the treaty, and a party to the charter, the United States of America is responsible for everything that the state of Colorado does. It's like you being a parent. You're responsible for your children. Ultimately, even though they're minors, you're responsible for their actions." So, therefore, when you take a look at the United States International Organization, and there's several chartered states, the United States International Organization, and there's several chartered states, what you call third parties. Because they're technically not a party to the contract, but yet they're held to the same standards as if they were because the United States of America, as a state, name is on the contract. And all of their subordinates, all of their organs, all of their corporations, all of their associations, all of their municipalities, all of their unincorporated territories, anything that's assessed back to the United States, and anything assessed back to the United States of America is the responsibility of the United States of America, right? So, the United States of America ultimately is responsible for everything that happens by their own corporations. So, that's what the Moors have to understand. We can bring a suit towards anyone that's a party to the contract, and we can bring a suit towards anyone who's under the subordination of the United States of America, right? Alright, that's what we gotta understand. All of their charters, because that's exactly what they are. The United States International Organization is a charter. And the United States International Organization's charter has set up 50 other charters that are making a trust territory claim to the land. But they're nothing but charters. And what are charters? They're organizations, right? Whether they're incorporated or unincorporated, they're still charters, right? They're not sovereign states, okay? That must be the proper mindset, okay? Let's take it from the top, Sister Nova.
Erga omnis parties. Erga omnis means "in relation to all or dispute with all." The term is used in international law as the state's right to defend against the foreigners that trespass against another state and its nation's human rights, nationals' human rights via the preemptory norms of international law, just cogits. The ICJ recognizes erga omnis principles as a means to enforce state rights against any foreign state, international organization, organs, agents, and third parties that trespasses on or against the property, territory, or frontier of a successor state.
Alright, let's continue.
Keeping in mind, the term erga omnis is in contradiction to contract law, whereas typically, a contract can only be enforced against the signatory party to the contract and no other. This preemptory norm affirms that erga omnis principles allow the alleged injured state or states to seek restitution, compensation, interest, satisfaction, and reparations either singly or in combination for the injury committed by the trespassing state, international organization, organs, agents, and third parties inter alia. For example, AMPAC is a successor state in Morocco by constitutional rights of Udi Passevadi's Juris Customs and treaty rights of the triple principle of the Act of Algiers series of 1906, Chapter 7, General Provisions. Therefore, its Moroccan nationals are now entitled to human rights as preemptory norms. AMPAC also became a contracting party to the Moroccan treaties by accessions, ratification, deposit, and promulgation in accordance with international law. Keeping in mind that the Foreign United States of America is a party to the Moroccan treaties of the Foreign United States International Organization, acts as a foreign representing agent for the United States of America, whereas the United States International Organization is not a contracting party to the Moroccan treaties because only states can be signatory parties to a treaty. The United States of America's Congress created a charter named "The United States" on the 21st of February of 1871. The term "United States," "United States Municipal Corporation," "United States Federal Corporation," "United States International Organization," "Organ, Agent, or a Third Party" shall mean the same in this explanation. The United States International Organization and its intergovernmental organization, agents, takes an oath to support and defend the de facto constitution of the United States, charter, in which the chartered constitution of the United States of 1871 could not be deposited with the League of Nations of 1920 or with the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. Why? Because the United States International Organization is a third party and cannot recognize itself as a state, and nor can it falsely proclaim through a public proclamation that it is a state. Only the term "United States of America" can be recognized as a state and be recognized as a party to a contract. Recognizing that the United States of America exists in only, exists in name only because of its absence of a de jure centralized three branches of government, however, the United States Federal Corporation acts as an intergovernmental organization, agent, and third party on behalf of the United States of America. In other words, the agents of the United States Organization act as regional attorneys and international attorneys to represent their client known as the United States of America. Furthermore, the Charter of the United States has created 50 foreign chartered constitutions that are commonly known as the 50 States. The 50 states of the Union do not possess sovereign constitutions. The 50 Union states have not deposited their constitutions with the United Nations in accordance with the customary norms of international law. Why? Because the 50 states are not organic states. The 50 chartered trust territories are governed by a parenting charter known as the Charter of the United States Organization. Wherefore, the parent charter and its 50 dependent charters cannot be signatory parties to any Moroccan treaties. Why can't the 50 chartered so-called states and the Charter of the United States be recognized as organic states? A, because they never deposited their constitutions with the Secretaryate of the United Nations. Therefore, no constitution can be recognized or enforced if it has not been filed on the record. B, the parent charter of the United States is not recognized as a signatory power, negotiating state, or contracting state party for the Moroccan treaties. C, none of the 50 chartered so-called states are signatory powers, negotiating states, or contracting states to the Moroccan treaties inter alia. Further, recognizing that the 50 chartered so-called Union states are not direct parties to the Moroccan treaties and not direct parties to the Charter of the United Nations, then how can Moroccan successor states enforce obligations against a foreign person that allegedly is not a party to the Moroccan treaties or the United Nations charter? The lawful means to bring a claim against a person that is not a party to a contract is commonly known as erga omnis parties against third parties and the state. The International Court of Justice case law gives effective countermeasures to injured states to bring Pacific Settlement of Dispute claims against any foreign state that is ultimately responsible for internationally wrongful acts by its own international government, organizations, organs, agents, and third parties. The United States of America is ultimately responsible for the internationally wrongful acts of its municipal, intergovernmental organizations, organs, charters, agents, members, agents, and third parties inter alia. For example, the chartered state of Colorado and its agents is a third party and an organ of the United States International Organization, and the United States and its agents is an intergovernmental organization and third party of the United States of America. Even though the United States of America exists in name only, it is still responsible for any intergovernmentally wrongful acts committed by the United States. The charter dependent state of Colorado and other territories, its organs, agents, and any third parties inter alia. The preemptory norms of international law, just cogits, in harmony with erga omnis principle has to achieve justice for the injured state against any injured state or third parties regardless if the persons are parties to a contract or not. In other words, the contracting party known as the state of AMPAC is entitled to bring a civil or criminal lawsuit against the contracting parties of the United States of America, the non-contracting party of the United States, the non-contracting party of the chartered state of Colorado, the organs, agents, and third parties. Question. How come several Moors states petition a class action lawsuit against the Foreign United States of America, the United States, its organs, agents, and third parties? Answer. All the Moors states can become erga omnis parties by writing a formal letter known as a declaration of intervention in support and defense of any Moors state that's being injured by internationally wrongful acts of a foreign state, its organizations, organs, agents, or third parties. Question. What is an example of erga omnis rulings according to the International Court of Justice? Answer. See the landmark order on provisional members in application of the convention on the prevention of punishment of the crime of genocide. The Gambia versus Myanmar of 2022, or the ICJ case concerning the questions relating to the obligation to prosecute or extradite Belgium versus Senegal of 2012, or the ICJ case concerning Barcelona Traction Life and Power Company LTD, which is Belgium versus Spain of 1970, inter alia. Question. What is the meaning of a declaration of intervention and an example of a declaration of intervention letter? Answer. See the ICJ case of Ukraine versus Russia Federation of 2021 for the prevention of punishment of the crime of genocide, inter alia.
Alright, thank you for the wonderful read, Sister Nova. So, what the Moors have to understand regarding erga omnis principles is this. When you bring a lawsuit against the United States of America, you must understand that all this time it's technically been the United States that's maintaining an extra territoriality jurisdiction in Morocco. This is why the France versus United States of America case of 1952, on page 202, says that it's the obligation that's binding on the constable court to bring its ministerial decrees against who? It said, "The United States authorities and the United States citizens." The ICJ was being very specific in that moment. They didn't say, "Bring your constable court orders against the United States of America" because they knew that the United States of America existed in name only. This was in 1952. So, they said the constable court has to bring its dispute towards the United States. So, therefore, under erga omnis parties, when the Moors bring their constable court orders, and we also have to petition the International Court of Justice, the first party on the lawsuit is the state itself, the United States of America, because that is the party on the suit. That's the party whose name is on the treaties. That's the party name on the charter. However, the United States of America has a power of attorney that represents it. Similar to what France was doing for the Sultan from the year 1912 to 1956. France was acting like a power attorney on behalf of the Moroccan empire. And right now, the United States International Organization is also acting as a power attorney on behalf of the United States of America. Because both the empire Morocco and the United States of America are both void of a central government at this time, both of them. So, right now, the Moors are restoring their state governance as organic states, successor states, right? We represent the empire. So, now, if we have a dispute, we have to bring it to who? We have to have a dispute against the United States of America, but the whole world knows that the United States of America is being governed by a power of attorney by the name of the United States International Organization. And the United States International Organization is not a party on our treaties. So how can we bring a suit towards the United States? Well, the ICJ has already stated for the record, the counsel court can still bring a case towards the United States. Cause they said on page two oh two of France versus United States of America. You see how they're giving us the answers to the test? You can still bring a suit towards the United States even though the United States is not a party on the treaty. You see how they're letting the answer out? Okay, so now let's fast forward. How do we come together as Moors? How do we bring a suit towards the United States of America as all the more states coming together? Well, you see erga amis parties. Not only allows the Moors to bring a suit. One more state to bring a suit towards three legal personalities, United States of America. United States Internationalization and any of their several states, right? Charter states. We can do that, but we can do it as parties together. For example, if AMPAK has a dispute with the United States of America, because we are interstate. The United States of America, or should I say, the United States International Organization. And their FBI, DEA, CIA, right? If they're coming in now infringing upon our rights. And now they're utilizing the state of Colorado and their so-called free princes government. To enforce their share of any type of lawsuits, et cetera, because they're now trying to do what? They're trying to infringe upon our rights. Whoa, an attack on one more state is an attack on all the more states. Because under, under erga amis parties. That means United States of America is trespassing against AMPAK's human rights as well as the sovereignty of our state. So if the United States of America and the United States and the state of Colorado is doing anything to infringe against AMPAK's rights. That means they're gonna also be attacking other more states. Because they're gonna set precedent in doing so. So how do we fight back? Well, we come together as parties, right? So all the Moors can come together and support one more state. Okay, so we'll talk about that a little bit more today, okay? Okay, Moors, I'm going to give the Moors some examples, right? Then we'll get into a little bit deeper dive. So Moors can go to the International Court of Justice website. Or you can type into Google, uh, uh, Ukraine versus Russia, right, Federation? Um, case in the International Court of Justice, have you want to look at it? So this is about, so, so Ukraine took Russia to the ICJ under what? Pacific settlement of dispute. Right? So wouldn't Russia, excuse me, what did Ukraine use as a claimant? What did they use? They said, okay, we're gonna use this right here allegations of genocide under the convention on the prevention. And punishment of the crime of genocide. So they went right at genocide. Why is that? Because see genocide is listed under, under periphery norms of international law, just cogent. And with periphery norms, that's human rights violations. This is the low hanging fruit. Anytime you say the word genocide, that's all about human rights, right? But keep in mind, the state, the state of Ukraine, a state is also what? A person in international law. So it's also genocide against the state itself. Right? You gotta understand that. A state is recognized as a person in international law. As well as this, is human beings of the state, inhabitants of the state, the citizens of the state, the nation of the state. So it's the duality of both, but the state represents the people, right? So in this case. You'll see, when you go to it, Moors, do a little bit of research. You'll see what's called a declaration of intervention. Okay, a declaration of intervention. But wait, that's not Ukraine. That's not Russia. That's a different European state thing. So what's happening? Okay, watch, Moors. So their declaration of intervention means they're writing letters on behalf of who? Ukraine, right? They're writing letters on behalf of Ukraine. So the European states are coming together under erga amis parties. And they're supporting Ukraine by all them writing a declaration of intervention. And they're putting that on the record at the International Court of Justice. Which now makes them also a party to the suit. Because it's a class action lawsuit. And even though Ukraine is the interstate. The other third party states, which is the European states, are coming together as third parties. To help support Ukraine. Okay, so let's look at this list. This is how Moors have come together. So let's pretend like this said. Uh, AMPAK versus United States of America, right? Okay, then, then we come down here, we say, okay, who's all on the list? All the more states were right was called a declaration of intervention. Which makes them now a party to the case. Here's what Moors got to pay attention to. You see how it's got Litchstein? Guess what? The more states' names will be on this case. So even though AMPAK is the interstate. The Moors, other more states' name will make history because your name will be on the case too. As an interested party under erga amis parties, we come together. Because guess what? Russia was trespassing against who? Who was Russia trespassing against? Ukraine, right? So Russia's trespass against Ukraine. The other European states thought as though Ukraine's trespass against, uh, excuse me, Russia's trespass. Against Ukraine was a trespass on the other European states. So they said an injury to Ukraine is an injury to all the other European states. Okay, so they all came together. Let's, let's take a look at it real quick. So the declaration of intervention for Litchstein, you come down, look. Declaration of intervention from Cyprus, you come down. Here's another one. Here's a joint, a joint declaration of intervention of Canada and the Netherlands, right? So instead of me going down this list, Moors can go back and look at the actual website. I've condensed it, okay? All right, here we go. So I'll put it into a word now, okay? See allegations of genocide under convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. Ukraine versus Russia Federation in the year twenty twenty-two inter alia. So I've listed all the states, condensed it, right? Here we go. So here's what Moors got to understand. So if this was AMPAK versus United States of America, all the other more states. Will be listed right here in the same case, right? Class action lawsuit, listen. Okay, so you would have decorations like this. All of these European states wrote a declaration of intervention. We're going to talk about the declaration of intervention a little bit more, and we're going to talk about erga amis parties. But I just wanted to see them, let the Moors see, look at all these states that came together. To become parties to support Ukraine, okay? All these states, okay? Now look who's on there. The United States of America, right? Now I'm going to share this document, uh, with Sister Nova. She'll make sure she get it out to all the, all the wazirs, right? All the prime ministers. So they can share it with their constituents, okay? This is a, be a live, they can click on it and go directly to the document. That way they can read the declaration of intervention, okay? So all the more states will come together and pretty much write the same declaration of intervention. Will copy paste, plug and play. But all the more states will write one and make history along with AMPAK. Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll go over this a little bit more in the future, okay? All right, so since you got all those states, right? Let's minimize it. Got all those states. We're gonna learn a little bit more about how attorneys look at erga amis. Okay, the understanding of erga amis from an international law perspective, okay? Just let the Moors know. And then we're gonna get into. Understanding what's the introduction to intervention under international law. We probably won't get to that document today. But I'm going to keep going over these documents because it's gonna be very important for Moors to keep running this same pick and roll. Play against the United States of America. Every time the United States of America, or should I say, the United States International Organization. Does something to injure one of our states by trespassing on our Moroccan laws. We will come together and run this same play. All our states will come together and, under erga amis parties. And we'll all write a declaration of intervention. Why is that? Because just like the United States does, right? The United States on the back of their currency, right? It has the eagle, the bald eagle, right? They'll say it's the American eagle, but it's not an American eagle. What type of eagle is it? It's a Moroccan eagle. It's indigenous to the land and what's the name of the land? Morocco. It's not a American bald eagle. It's a Moroccan bald eagle. And that is the truth. How do I know it's the truth? Go ask the United States of America, did they sign the treaty to remain in Morocco? And the answer is yes. So did they bring the bald eagle from Great Britain? No. So the bald eagle is a Moroccan eagle. When you take a look at the eagle on the back of the currency. It's holding thirteen arrows. What does the thirteen arrows represent? Well, we all know the generic understanding is, it, it represents the thirteen colonies. But what it represents is unity. Come together as erga amis parties against anyone who trespasses against the thirteen colonies. The thirteen colonies would come together and fight as one state. So the arrows represent what? The defense of their sovereignty. That must be understood. So as we continue studying, Moors, we're going to keep learning about erga amis principles. We'll look at how attorneys look at, right? Because No Badr Ali said what? Go to the old and no law. And they gave you a favorable response, right? So let's start understanding how do attorneys look at this? What perspective do they look at? We'll start a little bit more about the ICJ as well, okay? All right. Okay, so what we're going to do is. We're gonna read a little bit more about erga amis parties. Let's get a basic fundamental understanding, right? Moors can do more research at home, but let's go ahead and read. This is eighteen pages. But it's technically not eighteen because these attorneys put a lot of footnotes, right? A lot of references into the document. And sometimes the references take up almost half the page. So it's really like ten pages of real information, but yet the references are good, right? We'll make sure Sister Nova make sure she, she gets this out to all the wazirs, okay? All right, Sister, we're gonna go ahead and start reading this, um.
Erga amis print, erga amis parties before the International Court of Justice. From standing to judgment on the merits.
All right, pause right there. So, so Moors, um, this right here. Uh, Nova, can you read that?
The authors are associates at Debbie Voice and Plimpton LLP. The views expressed herein are the author's personal views and should not be attributed to the, to the firms or its clients.
Okay.
One, application of the convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. Uh.
As Gambia versus?
Gambia versus Myanmar, or, order twenty twenty ICJ one.
Okay, so Moors, I just want you to see the reference point, right? So these attorneys wrote this, okay? So I wanted to give them credit for the hard work they put into this, okay? All right, Moors, so the Moors can find this online if they choose to. They can look this particular title up. And it should just, uh, auto-populate in Google. All right, so, um, let's go ahead and start from the top and we'll go ahead and read on through.
Okay, erga amis parties before the International Court of Justice. From standing to judgment on the merits. Nawi, Uka Biala, Duncan Pickard, and Alyssa Yamamato. One, strategic considerations before instituting proceedings. Two, legal standards on the merits. Three, marshaling evidence. A, documentary evidence. B, third-party reporting. One, UN fact-finding. Two, NGO fact-finding. C, witness evidence. D, proceedings on other adjudic, adjudicatory bodies. E, judicial intervention. And four, conclusion. In its landmark order on provisional measures. In application of the convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. The Gambia versus Myanmar, the Gambia versus Myanmar, the International Court of Justice, ICJ, or the court. Held that the Gambia had primarfa, primarfaishu standing before the court. Based solely on the erga amis party's nature of the obligations it sought to enforce. Citing its advisory opinion and reservations to the genocide convention, the court reasoned. All the state's parties to the genocide convention have a common interest to ensure that acts of genocide are prevented. And that if they occur, their authors do not enjoy impunity. And that common interest implies that the obligations and questions are owed. By any state party to all the other state parties to the convention. The court first recognized erga amis obligations in Barcelona Traction Light and Power Company LTD, Belgium versus Spain. Barcelona Traction, when it explained that there are two categories of obligations under public international law. Obligations of a state towards the international community as a whole. And those arising vice, vice versa, another state. For the former, the court explained that in view of the importance of the rights involved. All states can be held to have a legal interest in their protection. There, they are obligations erga amis. According to the court, such obligations include the prohibitions on aggression and genocide. As well as the obligation to respect the principles and rules concerning the basic rights of the human person. Including protection from slavery and racial discrimination.
Pause right there. So as you can see, Moors, these attorneys are reading about erga amis principles, right? They're going back during a, a review of the ICJ's report. And they're talking about human rights, right? This is all about human rights. Erga amis is about protecting the human rights. Of the people of that state, but it's also protecting the independence of that state. The sovereignty independence of that state and the integrity of its domains. Okay, so erga amis is a periphery norm, just cogent, meaning it's a human rights violation. If the United States of America, the United States International Organization, or any of its fifty chartered, uh, states, right? Do anything to infringe or trespass against our human rights as Moors or against our states, okay? That's why they're opening up immediately talking about human rights because they're talking genocide. Genocide is the prevention of keeping someone so, from proclaiming their own independence. That is a violation of international law. That's a human right to have a nationality. It's a human right to enforce who deposited his juris. It's a human right to enforce treaties. And in our treaty of the Act of the Stair, it says, we have a right, a treaty right. To the triple principle of sovereignty independence, which is erga amis principles. Interior domains, which is erga amis principles. And economic liberty without any inequality for our humans, right? Okay, let's continue.
The court later recognized that related concept of obligations erga amis parties. Obligations that a state owes to a group of other states. With a common interest such as other state parties to a multilateral convention. In questions relating to the obligation to prosecute or extradite Belgium versus Senegal, Belgium versus Senegal. The court held that the state parties to the convention against torture and other cruel. Inhuman or degrading treatment or punishment, CAT. Have a common interest in ensuring compliance with certain obligations under the convention. And as such obligations are owed by any state party to all the other states' parties to the convention. The International Law Commission's articles on the responsibility of states. For internationally wrongful acts summarize simil, similarly recognizing both obligations. Ode to a group of states and ode to the international community as a whole. Before the Gambia's case against Myanmar, the court had never considered an application alleging violations. Of obligations erga amis. Parties by a state that did not assert any special interests in the dispute. The closest it had previously come to doing so was in Belgium versus Senegal. Where the court found no need to address Belgium's asserted special interests since any. State party to the convention against torture may invoke the responsibility of another state party. With a view to ascertaining the alleged failure to comply with its obligations erga amis parties. Otherwise, it reasoned if a special interest were required to bring a claim. In many cases, no state would be in the position to make such a claim.
Pause. So what is the ICJ saying right here? What are these attorneys saying? See, another state is seeing some human rights violations going on. But the, the state that's watching from afar is saying. But the the state that's watching from afar is saying, but we're not a party to what's going on in that state. Right? We're not a party to what's going on between Ukraine and Russia, right? Because let's take the United States of America example, where Russia wasn't attacking the United States of America. But they were watching from afar, right? So under erga Amis parties, the United States of America had a right to do what? To intervene, right? So it's a declaration of intervention to intervene to say now, the United States of America saying now we wanna be a party to it. Now, we're not gonna join in to the war, but we're gonna come and bring support towards the injured party coming on this Ukraine, right? So now instead of Ukraine going to the ICJ as a lone star state against Russia. Now it appears as if it was forty states, forty-one states going against Russia at the ICJ. Right? Remember the list. So the ICJ is looking at it saying, man, this is really a class action lawsuit. It was no longer Ukraine by itself. It was basically forty-one, forty-two European states. Keeping in mind, the United States of America claims to be a party to NATO. What is NATO as an acronym? The North Atlantic Treaty Organization. But who can be a party to NATO? Only European states. Well, wait. How many United States of America be a party to NATO if they're not a European state? Or are they a European state? Well, wait a minute. Either they're a European state or they're not. Right? You gotta understand my question I'm asking, the statement I'm making. You see the games is being played? Because NATO don't allow any African states to become a member of NATO to get military protections. They said, no, it's a European thing. Okay, that's cool. That's y'all treaty. But how did the United States of America become a party to it? Is the United States of America a European state? Well, according to that contract, yes, it is. See the games is being played? Alright, I I get off of that. We'll get back to that later.
The United States isn't a state though, right?
Well, the United States of America is a state. It's a stated name only. But my point is, how can they say they're a European state? You know how they saying to get away with it? Cause they still a British colony. Anyway, we'll talk about that another day. Yes.
The ICJ confirmed this position in the Gambia versus Myanmar. Although the ICJ only found standing on a primatific basis. The other, the order may open the door to increasing claims asserting violations of treaty-based obligations. Despite the lack of a factual nexus between the applicant and the respondent with respect to the legal controversy. The court ordered in the Gambia versus Myanmar may create opportunities for judicial intervention by the ICJ. Even where other forms of international intervention are elusive. For example, international efforts to hold the Assad regime accountable for atrocities in the Syrian civil war. Have been unsuccessful thus far. However, in September of twenty twenty, the Netherlands announced that it had sent a diplomatic note to Syria stating. Its intervention to hold.
Intention.
Intention to hold the government of President Bashar al-Assad responsible. Under international law for gross human rights violations and torture in particular under the CAT.
Pause. So you see what's happening? So Ne- so um, the Netherlands was not a party to the dispute that was going on. But they came in as an erga Amis party, right? To let Syria know, you gotta stop doing what you're doing. So the erga Amis party, anybody can come in and deal with the dispute even though they're not a part of the direct dispute. So what's happening? So even though AMPA might be involved with a dispute with the United States of America, the United States and the state of Colorado. But yet the other more states can come and support us. And now our case just got that much stronger. Because we're uniting, right? Cause we're the United States of Morocco, right? Let's continue.
Uh, in announcing the decision, Dutch Foreign Minister Steph Bloch stated that the. Evidence is overwhelming of the horrific crimes the Assad regime has committed. Nevertheless, even in cases where the evidence appears to be compelling. Claims based solely on erga Amis parties standing are likely to present the applicant with particular evidentiary challenges. The types of legal controversies that are likely to inspire claims based on erga Amis parties standing. Will often feature allegations of violations that are both widespread and difficult to prove. Moreover, the lack of a factual nexus between the applicant and the legal controversy. May pose serious limitations on the applicant's access to evidence. This article explores the following issues in the context of proceedings before the ICJ. Based on erga Amis party standings or one, strategic considerations concerning the initiation of proceedings. Two, the types of legal standings that may be applicable in merits proceeding. And three, opportunities and challenges with respect to marshaling evidence.
Alright, it's pause right there. So why are they saying it might be a little difficult for someone to be an erga Amis party, right? Why would it be difficult for the United States of America to really get involved with going on between Ukraine and Russia? It's because the United States of America is not being injured directly. They're being injured indirectly. So they, the United States of America has a vested interest in Ukraine. But yet Russia is not violating the United States of America. So it's very difficult difficult for the United States of America to say what's happening. Ukraine is certainly a direct injury to the United States of America. That's why it's difficult. But what is the point of erga Amis parties? Is to let the courts know that this is a class action lawsuit, that there's several other states. Who have a vested interest in the fact that one of their states they recognize is a part of their party. That's a part of their party. So they're looking out for each other, right? So if Ukraine is going up against, going against Russia in the ICJ. It looks a whole lot better when they got forty other states supporting Ukraine. Versus Ukraine going there all by themselves. It also based upon countermeasures, right? Counterintelligence, Russia is looking at it saying, I thought we was only attacking Ukraine. Now all of a sudden, there's forty-two other European states that's getting involved with this dispute. You see, from a psychological perspective, if in fact, let's say the Moors, AMPA as a state. Is bringing a dispute against the United States of America and the United States and the state of Colorado and they continue to injure us, right? They're violating our rights and they're performing um acts of genocide. Now the Moors can come together, whether we got three states, five states, seven states, ten states. It looks better when you're coming together as a party to fight against the United States of America. Why else is important for Moors to utilize erga Amis parties? Because when the ICJ sees all these more states on a document, they're gonna say, these Moors. Used to say, this is the rise of the Moors. Well, it don't look like they rising anymore. It looks like they're here. The sun ain't rising. It's at twelve noon. The clock of destiny is here in real time. So when we come together in a proper written instrument under erga Amis parties. And we all write a declaration of intervention to add our names to the case under class action lawsuit. The world is gonna stand up and pay attention. They'll say, these Moors got constitutions. They were seated to the treaties. They've all come together to put together a class action lawsuit. They're serious. And they know we're going to win at the ICJ because the ICJ judges are bound to what? Reading the law in a strict sense. They must read our treaties like it's braille. It just is what it is. The world will take notice. If AMPA goes to the ICJ by itself, will the world pay attention? Yes. But like, uh, what's his name in the uh movie Django? Counting Candy, right? The slave master. You remember when Django and he was talking to him about some money? And he turned around real quick and said, oh, now you got my undivided attention. You see, when the Moors all come together, we gonna get the world's undivided attention. We'll get their attention as one more state going to ICJ. They see five, six, seven, ten, fifteen more states all on the same uh docket. That's gonna get the world's undivided attention. They know the game's over. Who technically knows the game is over? The bankers. Right? I E Jacob. Jacob will know he's gotta now come to the table, do what? He's gotta now follow along with the Charter of the United Nations. Chapter six, Pacific Southern dispute says, first of all, you must seek a solution. And the solution is based upon what? Negotiations, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, judicial settlement. The banker's gonna come to the table. They know that it just is what it is. Once this matter is settled, that the Moors can absolutely enforce their constant courts. That means some people about to start going to jail for violating our Moroccan law. So Morse has to understand it's very important to understand and study erga Amis parties. And the declaration of intervention because this is gonna be the playbook we're gonna keep using over and over and over again. It's fundamentals that we're studying right now. The generic term is class action lawsuit. But we look real strong together. Let's continue.
Nevertheless, even in cases where the evidence appears to be compelling. Claims based solely on erga Amis party standing are likely to present the applicant with particular evidentiary challenges. The types of legal controversies that are likely to inspire claims based on erga Amis party standing. Will often feature allegations of violations that are both widespread and difficult to prove.
Pause. Okay, we read all that. Let's let's move on.
Okay.
To this section.
Okay, one, strategic considerations before instituting proceedings. When deciding whether to initiate proceedings based on erga Amis parties standing and initiate. Initiate proceedings before the court, states must consider the potential ICJ case. In the context of the larger strategy for resolving the dispute at hand. An ICJ order and judgment can play an influential role in addressing gross violations of international human rights. Conventions by increasing or maintaining public attention. Providing leverage for diplomatic negotiations or authoritatively settle settling disputes. Factual issues.
Oh, so right here, these United States attorneys. Who all passed the Bar Association, right? The British Accredited Registry. They're saying, use the case law of the ICJ. You see, they already know the power the Moors have when we go to the International Court of Justice because it's already well set of principles. Morse have to understand this, right? This is why they're gonna stall, deny, defend and act like they didn't get our documents. Because they already know there's no benefit in actually laying down their king right now in a chess game. Why would they quit right now and talk to us? They said, no, let these Moors play it all the way out. Cause they already know they're in what? A losing position. Technically, there's no benefit in it for them talking to us at this stage of the game. They're hoping that we make blundered moves. That we don't know how to play the game of diplomatic relations. And that we don't know how to play the game of coastal relations and that we don't know how to play the game of judicial settlement. So they wanna see if we actually know the fundamentals of staterly. So they're going to play it out. And they already know when we go to ICJ. We're, they're not arguing with Moors anymore. They're arguing with the treaty. It just happened to be Moors standing there with a fez on, but what are the IC, what is the ICJ technically looking at? The treaties. They already know the proper parties are sitting in the room, but they got a blindfold on. They're reading the law in braille. They don't see the parties. They only see the treaty at that point. Game's over. And the Bar Station, Bar Association attorneys know this already, alright? Okay, let's start it however.
However, the initiate, the initiation of contentious proceedings implicates. A host of diplomatic considerations. It may complicate the applicant's relationship with the respondent. Creating the potential for diplomatic or economic retaliation. And could even frustrate attempts to. Resolve the legal controversy by diplomatic means. Moreover, pursuant of an ICJ case also requires significant resources and access to sufficient evidence. Would the applicants might have to weigh those considerations? The gravity of the situation and the availability of other forms of intervention in deciding whether to proceed. If the state elects to institute ICJ proceedings based on erga Amis parties standing. A key strategic question is whether to bring suit alone or as part of a group of states.
Pause. See how they're talking? You see Morse, they know your chess moves before you even make them. So they see you are already starting to move your chess pieces in combination, right? Chess pieces are moved in combination. You don't jump out there with one piece jumping all over the board. You start to develop your pieces, right? And you move them in combination. One piece supports another piece. They already know the Moors opening moves. They know everything we need to do to win the game. So what is that we need to do? We need to follow well sort of principles of the International Court of Justice case law. And enforce our treaties. All we have to do is follow instructions. All we gotta do is play a chess game that's already been played by other states on planet Earth. So case law, all you do is just do what? You replace the party names and add different party names, but it's basically the same case, like a chess game. Two chess players are playing, but oftentimes they're opening it up and defending with the same moves that other chess masters have already done. They're just duplicating and imitating similar openings and defenses. So they already know, they're talking about how the Moors can defeat them. Listen to how they're talking. But Moors need to learn that they already know our moves. We need to now go out and do what? Execute them. But first, we gotta practice. We gotta come together and unite. Not as one state, as multiple states coming together to fight as one state. Even though Ukraine is versus Russia is really forty-two European states versus Russia. You gotta understand what I'm saying to you Morse. These are chess moves, political chess moves, okay? Alright, let's let's start going here.
If a state elects to institute ICJ proceedings based on erga Amis party standing. A key strategic question is whether to bring suit alone or as a part of a group of states. Since the case would presumably seek to enforce community values based on their status as such. Proceedings featuring multiple applicants would offer strategic advantages. Joint applications by multiple states or an application by one state on behalf of a group of states. Could help demonstrate the strong collective interest in attaining accountability, increasing pressure to resolve the legal controversy.
Period. Pause right there. This is chess, political chess. You move your pieces, Morse. Why do you think you have all these pieces? You start off with sixteen pieces in chess. You move them in combination of each other. They support each other. No one can checkmate a king with one chess piece. You cannot win the game if you only got one piece on the board. You can't checkmate the other opponent's king with just one piece. You need at least two or three pieces to checkmate their opponent's king. Which means you must move in combination of each other. You must come as a group. We're looking at the answers to the test on the board. But the only way we can do this, we must first understand, odi posse de juris, and get it right with our constitutions. We must maintain unity. We must come together with accountability. We must understand how to create reforms that are repeatable, duplicatable, and transferable, not only to ourselves, but to the next generation. We have to get out of this individuality that we're gonna come at the United States of America one at a time. No, it's not the way chess is played. That must be understood. Let's keep reading the answers to the test. They already know how we're gonna open up and defeat them. They already know, should Moors come in one state or a group of states? Well, the answer's a group of states, and then what is that called in international law? Erga omnis parties. Well, what else do you need? A Declaration of Intervention to let the ICJ know there's several parties involved with this class action lawsuit.
States have long built coalitions before approaching international adjudication. From the joint application of France, Italy, Japan, and the United Kingdom with intervention from Poland in the SS Wimbledon case against Germany in nineteen twenty-two before the Permanent Court of International Justice to the Gambia's application against Myanmar in twenty nineteen on behalf of the fifty-seven member states of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation. Working together can also allow applicants to share resources, better withstand diplomatic backlash, and assume complementary roles in managing a broader strategy. On the other hand, joint proceedings can complicate decision-making and present coordination challenges.
Pause. Present challenges, right? So as the Moors are starting to coordinate to come together as erga omnis parties, we have to understand, we're all for one and one for all. We can't come in bickering. We just have to execute. We come up with a play on the clipboard, and you go out there and execute. There's no time to be arguing in the huddle. You're in a foxhole together. You gotta get out and execute. Period. Now, yes, will we negotiate with each other? Yes, but we're not gonna argue. We're not gonna sit there and have all these debates. We're not gonna have all this, oh, I agree to disagree conversations all the time. We gotta get out and execute because the clock of destiny is ticking. They already know what move we need to make. They just wait for us to make it. And as soon as we make a bad move, they say, "Yeah, we knew they didn't know how to play." They too busy arguing amongst themselves in the huddle. They ain't on the same team. Which means the United States of America is technically playing only against one state. Even though it looks like there's seven more states. The reality is, they know, they only going against one more state because they see the other seven more states can't get along with each other. So either we gonna be parties, or we're not. We'll keep talking about this.
On the other hand, joint proceedings can complicate decision-making and present coordination challenges. Nevertheless, a sole applicant might not be able to prevent other states from participating in the case. Either through intervention under Article sixty-two or sixty-three of the ICJ statute, or a separate application that the court could join to the first application, as it did in the North Sea continental shelf and Southwest Africa cases. For example, the Maldives, the Netherlands, and Canada have expressed interest in intervening in the Gambia versus Myanmar to show further support of the Rohingya people. Assist with the complex legal issues that are expected to arise, and pay special attention to crimes related to sexual and gender-based violence, including rape. Two, legal standards on the merits. Erga omnis parties treaty obligations are generally of heightened importance. They reflect core values of the state parties, who often elect to codify them because they reflect core values of the international community as a whole. Indeed, all just cogent norms give rise to erga omnis obligations. All of the erga omnis obligations that the ICJ first recognized in Barcelona traction are just cogents. Obligations that are codified in multilateral treaties today, which presumably give rise to obligations erga omnis parties. According to allegations that a state has breached erga omnis parties, obligations will often be the type of serious allegations for which heightened standards of proof are required. By way of example, we consider here the legal standards for proving genocide under the Genocide Convention and torture under the CAT, C-A-T, both of which the ICJ is likely to consider obligations erga omnis parties. The ICJ has set a high standard meeting the Senator requirements of the Genocide Convention, which defines genocide as any of the acts enumerated in Article Two committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group as such. The court held in application of the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide Bosnia versus Serbia, the Bosnian genocide case. It is not enough that the member of the group are targeted because they belong to that group. That is because the predator has a discriminatory intent. Something more perpetrator has a discriminatory intent. Something more is required. The acts listed in Article Two must be done with intent to destroy the group as such in whole or in part.
Pause. Okay, so, what we're understanding here is the United States and their Bar Association understands the rulings of the ICJ. It understands erga omnis parties. It understands that any violation of genocide is considered a human rights violation. They understand the seriousness that if anybody's coming to the table as erga omnis parties, basically, they're gonna be coming with a human rights violation suit. Class action suit, right? So once the Moors start understanding how to enforce this erga omnis parties, the United States of America already knows they're in a losing position. Right? They automatically know it because this is a human rights violation. Okay? That's what the Moors gotta take away from what we're reading at this time. Look how they're exposing this. You must have a proper concept and context of what we're reading. We're not reading this out loud just for the heck of it. Right? You must see this as strategy. There's strategy, then there's the tactical side of it. Right? What's the action? How do you play it out? Right? They're talking about their own strips and weaknesses. Moors must study this. Moors have to understand our own strips and weaknesses. Every time we bring a suit, it must be about human rights violations. All right? So let me give you an example. If they're trying to hold on to our Moors nationals, right, and say they arrest, detain one of our Moors nationals or one of our officers of the state, that's an act of genocide. Why do I say that? Because they're intentionally, willfully trying to not recognize our official status. They're intentionally, willfully trying to stop us from having varying stages of advancement. They're intentionally trying to stop our human rights, us proclaiming our nationality. Right? But how do you proclaim a nationality? Only your state can recognize your nationality. Right? I can sit here and tell you I'm Italian all day, but can I prove it? No, I can't. Italy has to recognize me as being Italian. So if I sit here and tell you I'm Moroccan, can I prove it? Absolutely. Why? Because my Moroccan state recognized me as being Moroccan. So if they turn around and try to ignore the fact I've just told them my nationality and I can prove it, and they still turn around and violate my human rights. They still turn around, and who's the date? The state of Colorado, right? The United States, et cetera. That's an act of genocide because they're trying to break up the group. The group of what? Of nationals that have formed a state. These are all genocide acts of use of force. Right? So they're utilizing use of force to get us to try to acquiesce. Back to doing what? Agreeing and capitulating that they still hold on to the extraterritoriality jurisdiction. Once we fight back with the proper instruments, they automatically know they're violating our human rights under erga omnis parties and the peremptive norms of just cogence. Okay? Let's continue.
At the oral argument on provisional measures in the Gambia versus Myanmar, counsel for Myanmar went so far as to argue that the existence of an alternative purpose for the alleged conduct is that case, in that case, purported counterterrorism objectives could preclude a finding of the requisite
Requisite.
Requisite intent. Proof, whether direct or by inference, or the requisite intent may require extensive fact-finding.
Pause. Okay, so what type of facts do Moors need? Well, one of the easiest facts we can use, right? Is if our nationals are still being detained in prison. If we have Moroccan nationals who have pledged their allegiance to our Moroccan states, and we submit counsel court orders that have them immediately released because we've taken a look at that case under DeNoble, right, of Newt. We've appealed that case, right? Because that is a national, and we're asking for a new case to be seen, to be held in front of the counsel court. If the United States of America does not release our national immediately, that's considered an act of genocide. That's proof that they're holding on to our nationals in prison. Right? If they're arresting detainees, if they continue, if they come to our personal residence, knocking on the door, that's a violation of diplomatic relations. Especially if you're an officer of your state, because an officer of the state has protections on the privileges and immunities. That your house is protected, they can't come knock on your door because your house is an extension of the Capitol Building, the government Capitol Building. Your car, right, is an extension that falls under privileges and immunities. They can't do anything to intervene your functions as an officer of the state. You have privileges and immunities. If they violate that, that's considered genocide, an act of genocide because they're trying to prevent us from being at varying stages of advancement. They're trying to prevent us from enforcing the principles of Moroccan law. These are all acts of genocide.
When analyzing?
Yeah.
When analyzing whether there is sufficient evidence, often circumstantial, the ICJ appears to show a preference for fact gathering conducted by United Nations bodies, UN bodies, as described further in Section Three B below.
Pause. Okay, so what happens? When we submit our dispute with the United Nations, General Assembly, and the Secretary General, and the Security Council, you know what the first things they're gonna do? Is come in and investigate. Right? They're gonna bring in a team, a Human Rights Committee, it's gonna put together a team to come and investigate to see if in fact that these claims, these alleged claims are true. They're gonna interview us, they're gonna interview the United States International Organization. But they're also gonna have access to the counsel court orders. It's already been set forth. Right? The United States is not abiding by our ministerial decrees of the counsel court. And we've already hit them with a contempt of court decree as well. And what's next? We don't have no choice but to take it to the United Nations because we gotta maintain the peace and security. And they're bringing a team to perform an investigation. That's what they're talking about here. They already know next steps before we even make them. You see? All right, so let's read that. This proof, starting with a proof.
Proof, whether direct or by inference of the requisite intent may require extensive fact-finding. When analyzing whether there is sufficient evidence, often circumstantial, the ICJ appears to show a preference for fact gathering conducted by United Nations bodies, as discussed further in Section Three B below. Claims under the C-A-T may also require applicants to meet high legal standards that require extensive factual support to satisfy. C-A-T defines torture as an act by which severe pain or suffering is intentionally inflicted for enumerated purposes by or at the instigation or of or with the consent or acquiescence of a public official or other person acting in an official capacity.
Pause. Okay, so what's suffering? You see this word right here, Moors? Uh, which, an act of genocide, what? Which severe pain or suffering? Right? What is suffering? If your nationals are locked in prison, or if your officers of your state are continuously being violated based upon their privileges and immunities rights. Right? That's suffering. It's sufferance. Right? These are acts of genocide where they try to violate our principles of Moroccan law. You gotta really catch what's happening here. Right? Because the word suffering is not defined, it's a generic word. Right? So you can see, suffering, then they start talking about officers as well. You see? Let's read that again.
Claims under the C-A-T may also require applicants to meet high legal standards that require extensive factual support to satisfy. C-A-T defines torture as an act by which severe pain or suffering is intentionally inflicted for enumerated purposes by or at the instigation of or with the consent or acquiescence of a public official or other person acting in an official capacity. The ICJ has not yet interpreted this standard. Belgium versus Senegal, the sole C-A-T case before the ICJ, did not seek to hold Senegal responsible for acts of torture, but rather for its failure to prosecute or extradite former Chadien president Haissani Habri for acts of torture that he committed. But based on the plain terms of the C-A-T, the jurisprudence of the Committee Against Torture, the Geneva-based treaty body charged with monitoring compliance with C-A-T, and the jurisprudence of international criminal tribunals, the court is likely to require specific intent. State attribution is another inquiry that may present challenging legal standards in the context of proving violations of obligations erga omnis parties. In order to establish conduct attributable to a state under international law, the alleged act or omission must either be committed by an organ, person, or entity acting under the authority, instruction, direction, or control of the state, whether formal or de facto, or acknowledged and adopted by the state as its own conduct.
Pause. So either the state is, the state could be the state, major state, or it could be the de facto state. Who's the de facto state right now? The United States International Organization pretending to be a state. Who else is de facto? All their fifty, what? Chartered dependent states. Right? They're all chartered. They're not organic states. Right? So what are they saying here? The United States of America is still responsible even for its de facto organs. And what is one of their organs? The United States. What's another one of their organs? The FBI, the Department of Justice. These are all organs. All recognized in international law as organs. And they're all responsible to the United States of America. So any internationally wrongful acts committed by any of their fifty chartered dependent states or directly by the United States is the responsibility of the United States of America. So they become the erga omnis parties that we bring a suit against. All three legal parties, and we as Moors come together as erga omnis parties as a group against their group. And what's their group? All three of those legal personalities that I talked about. So it's a group-on-group dispute. You see what's happening? Because everything they do, they're moving their chess pieces in combination. They're utilizing the United States of America, the United States and one, if not all, fifty of their union so-called states to hold on to an extraterritoriality jurisdiction in Morocco. You see what's happening? So Moors gotta come together So Moors gotta come together as a group against their group.
Allegations concerning erga honest parties obligations, such as allegations of genocide and torture, will often be susceptible to attribution defenses. For example, in the Bosnian genocide case, even though the court did find sufficient evidence of specific intent to commit genocide, it was unable to attribute the conduct of the Army of Republica Sparska to Serbia. The court nevertheless found that Serbia had violated its obligations to prevent the Serbrenzia massacre under Article One. As with the Genocide Convention, erga honest parties claims under C-A-T may also entail attribution issues. Building a link between allegations of torture and public officials will also raise complex issues not just of law, but also of fact, to which we now turn. Three, marshaling evidence. The types of legal controversies that are likely to inspire efforts to secure ICJ interventions by unaffected states will often feature widespread violations of erga honest parties obligations, requiring extensive fact development. For example, reports indicate that more than fourteen thousand detainees have been killed due to torture at the hands of the Assad regime between March of twenty eleven and September of twenty twenty. Similarly, reports indicate that Myanmar Security Forces killed at least sixty-seven hundred Rohingya between late August and late September of twenty seventeen and have uprooted approximately one million Rohingya Muslims who are now left as stateless refugees sheltering in neighboring Bangladesh. Accordingly, the Gambia's twenty twenty memorial spawns over five hundred pages with more than five thousand annexed pages of supporting materials. Applicants basing themselves solely on erga honest party standing will often face particular challenges in securing access to the evidence necessary to build their case because the alleged violations will not directly affect the applicant or its nationals and are likely to have occurred within the respondent state's territory. Of course, this difficulty is not necessarily unique to cases involving erga honest party standing. As Judge Uwada observed in Oil Platforms, as Judge Uwada observed in Oil Platforms, Islamic Republic of Iran versus United States of America Oil Platforms, there is often an inherent asymmetry that comes into the process of discharging the burden of proof. That asymmetry featured in application of the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crimes of Genocide Croatia versus Serbia, the Croatian genocide case, where the court ultimately dismissed Croatia's claim that Serbia was best placed to provide explanations of acts which are claimed to have taken place in a territory over which Serbia exercised exclusive control. However, the court may have, the court may afford an applicant alleging violations of erga honest parties obligations within the exclusive territorial control of the respondent, a more liberal recourse to inferences of fact and circumstantial evidence, as it did in Corfu, Chanel, United Kingdom of Great Britain, and Northern Ireland versus Albania. Corfu, Chanel.
All right, so pause right there. So you can see, Moors, there's a lot of reference points, right? So we got a lot of reference points going on. So as the Moors start to read and understand what erga honest parties is, we must also understand that we need to have a discharge of the burden of proof, right? We need the burden of proof. And this is why, Moors, this is why the United States of America and the United States and their several chartered constituent states do not respond back to Moors. They know if they respond back and try to reject you in writing, that's an act of genocide. They know this. So they'll contingently ignore all of your political advancement until you finally have to take them to the United Nations in order to get the United Nations to come in as a third party mediator to force the United States of America to the table. It's not that the United States does not want to come to the table and discuss diplomatic relations with you. The problem is, if they put it in writing, A, they're somewhat recognizing the fact that you exist as a state. Number two, if they put anything in writing, more than likely, it's gonna be them rejecting your claim. And they know immediately that's an act of genocide. So they don't want to give Moors the burden of proof to then utilize and say, look at these emails we received. Look at this written documentation they put in the mail to us, right? So as we keep studying this, right, we'll go ahead and pause right here. We'll pick this back up in Class eighty-nine. We'll keep reading, right? But as we start to go down this understanding of erga honest principles and erga honest parties and the letter was commonly known as the Declaration of Intervention, all these things will come together. Keep in mind, Moors, what are we doing right now? We're just in the process right now. We're writing this out on the clipboard. We're in the huddle, we're putting together the play. Then we gotta go out and execute, right? All these things have already been done by other states on planet Earth. All we gotta do is go back and study these political chess moves that other states have done before us. It's as simple as that, all right? I end with that. Islam.
Islam.